Welcome to the November 24, 2020, Special City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Manager, you are on.
Yes, sir. The first order of business is swearing-in of newly-elected mayor and city council members. And we had said at time certain, but I think we were able to accommodate everybody in the chambers.
Yes, thank you.
So first, Councilmember-elect Dr. Sarah Stokel, will you come down?
Thank you. Dr. Stokel, do you please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand? And would you please repeat after me? I, Dr. Sarah Stokel...
I, Dr. Sarah Stokel...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
To support, protect, and defend...
To support, protect, and defend...
The Constitution and government...
The Constitution and government...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the state of Florida...
And the state of Florida...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Domestic and foreign...
Domestic and foreign...
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
Loyalty and allegiance...
Loyalty and allegiance...
To the same...
To the same...
That I am entitled to hold office...
That I am entitled to hold office...
Under the Constitution...
Under the Constitution...
That I will faithfully perform...
That I will faithfully perform...
All the duties...
All the duties...
Of office of council member...
Of office of council member...
For the city of Titusville...
For the city of Titusville...
On which I am about to enter...
On which I am about to enter...
So help me God...
So help me God.
And next, could we have Councilmember-elect Joe C. Robinson come to the podium?
Mr. Robinson, would you please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Joe C. Robinson...
J.C., Joseph C. Robinson...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
To support, protect, and defend...
To support, protect, and defend...
The Constitution and government...
The Constitution and government...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the state of Florida...
And the state of Florida...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Domestic and foreign...
Domestic and foreign...
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
Loyalty and allegiance...
Loyalty and allegiance...
To the same...
To the same...
That I am entitled to hold office...
That I am entitled to hold office...
Under the Constitution...
Under the Constitution...
That I will faithfully perform...
That I will faithfully perform...
All the duties...
All the duties...
Of office of council member...
Of office of council member...
For the city of Titusville...
For the city of Titusville...
On which I am about to enter...
On which I am about to enter...
So help me God...
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And Mayor-elect Daniel E. Diesel, will you please join us at the podium?
Mayor-elect Diesel, would you please place your left hand on the Bible? Raise your right hand? And please repeat after me. I, Daniel E. Diesel...
I, Daniel E. Diesel...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
To support, protect, and defend...
To support, protect, and defend...
The Constitution and government...
The Constitution and government...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the state of Florida...
And the state of Florida...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Domestic and foreign...
Domestic and foreign...
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
Loyalty and allegiance...
Loyalty and allegiance...
To the same...
To the same...
That I am entitled to hold office...
That I am entitled to hold office...
Under the Constitution...
Under the Constitution...
That I will faithfully perform...
I will faithfully perform...
All the duties...
All the duties...
Of office of mayor...
Of office of mayor...
For the city of Titusville...
For the city of Titusville...
On which I am about to enter...
Of which I am about to enter...
So help me God...
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And Mayor and Council, our first agenda item this morning is the selection of Vice Mayor.
Before we do that, would we like to take a five-minute recess to let everybody leave who needs to leave and wants to leave, and grandkids that can move out? Love my grandkids, but let's go just five minutes, a five-minute recess for those who want to depart, or at least let grandkids go find some chewing gum or something. So just a five-minute recess, we'll be right back. just a five-minute recess. We'll be right back. And this meeting is back in order. City Manager?
Yes, sir. The first agenda item for our Council is the selection of a Vice Mayor.
Council, do I have any nominations at this time or anyone who wishes to speak on their own behalf? Any nominations for the Vice Mayor?
I would like to make a nomination.
Go ahead, please.
Member Jolene Nelson.
Thank you very much. Is there another nomination?
No, I just sort of felt like it needed to be up to you. You have to work with us.
And.
I think.
And I don't disagree with that. I will say that, and City Manager and City Attorney can attest, that we actually, because I don't think we were quite sure what the legality of it was, how it worked.
Right.
And how it worked was that there needs to be nominations. However, if there were no nominations, then I could say where I was going with that. Okay? With that being said, any more nominations? All right, then we will close the Florida nominations, and I will say that we have great people up here could be Vice Mayor. Part of being Vice Mayor is representing the city when I don't, and I feel like we've got great people up here that can do that. But with that being said, I feel that the experience and the commitment and the depth of ownership of this city, I think Jolene Nelson is an excellent choice and one that I would gladly have made. So Jolene Nelson, do we simply say, everybody agree with that? We only need a consensus. So go ahead.
I would say I would be honored, and I would do whatever it took to get our city moving in the right direction, continuing in the right direction.
I was going to say, keep moving.
Because I think we are going in the right direction.
Okay, and I'm assuming, I'm learning this up here. I'm assuming that there's a card?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue, and I've been a resident here since '71. Came here in '70. The city of Titusville is not on the right course at all. It's way off the course. There's corruption, there's dishonesty, and so forth, big time. So what I've done is I've sent an email to our new mayor, which I'm thankful that he's there. I mean, he was, he's so, let's say, so popular that no one, no one would even, even come to be against him on the polls. So no one came forward. So I thank you for, for coming forward, and it shows your popularity here. Not just popularity, but there's many other things it shows. But we're having problems here, is that, and one of the problems is that for the last 21 months, there's been dishonesty, lies, and what it is, is there's, there's, there's dissension among staff and council and our City Manager, let me say, Shyster City Manager. And for this, this purpose, I've even, I've even requested that for the termination of our Shyster City Manager for his corruption, right now. Right now, there's a disagreement with council and, and the city, and the records manager, finance department, legal department, purchasing and contracting, the media department, the City Clerk's Office. What's going on right now is that I can get hundreds of witnesses because they just, they can just go to the records clerk and ask, where's the report, the $70,000 report? It doesn't exist. The $70,000 report, for example, Walt Johnson would, would say to our, the City Attorney says, hey, you gave him eight, gave Stan Johnson eight copies of the report. I never received one report. The report doesn't exist. So for this corruption that's going on right now, I'm saying we're calling some people some liars, bullies, and cowards, cowards because they're not telling the truth. I nominate Pastor Joe Robinson, maybe. He would, he would not want that, but I would nominate him for Vice Mayor. We need to clean up council. We need to get rid of our City Manager. He's crooked. He's worthless as far as I can discern. We've got all kinds of problems that I identified to you in the, in the email that I sent you November the 22nd. Big time, big problems. For example, we have problems with truth, justice, logic, engineering. We have, I mean, you don't even have, I come up here as a professional engineer. I don't have a professional engineer to oppose what I say from the city. With all the money you've got, you can't get a professional engineer to disagree with me in writing? It's nuts. It's, it's against safety, which I crossed here.
Time's up.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. I see no motion. We're good. Thank you.
Thank you. God bless you.
All right, I have Jolene Nelson being nominated for Vice Mayor. I don't, as I understand our discussion, we don't need a motion. We can simply.
No, it seems, we have a consensus. You have one, one nominee and.
All right, with that said, congratulations, Jolene Nelson is the Vice Mayor. And this is where we switch seats.
Switch seats?
We switch seats. I'm going to miss you already.
I was getting used to this seat. I'm taking my purse with me.
And Mayor, as we're adjusting seats, if there's any other Councilmember that would like to change seats, this will be your assigned seat. We'll set up the rest of the dais appropriately.
I don't think Member Jordan wants to move.
The mayor.
I'm fine.
Okay, they look to be fine with their seats, sir. We move on to number three.
Next item is the designation of the Chair and Vice Chair of the Titusville Redevelopment, Community Redevelopment Agency.
And this is also a consensus? All right, I would just add.
Or not, not, not your nominations.
Right, I got that right. I would add to that in the two times, two, maybe three times now we've done this, whoever the mayor and the Vice Mayor are, move over to CRA as the Chair and the Vice Chair. I think that makes sense, and that is what I'd like to see us do. Do we have agreement on that?
Yes.
Yes. Ma'am?
I'm so sorry, sir. We have a card on this item. I wanted to make sure you know.
Now, let me just get my consensus first. So we do have a consensus, so we would, I would be the Chair and Vice Mayor Nelson will be the Vice Chair. And the card, sir.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue, and a resident here since '71. And I would think that you have to vote on that, don't you? Not just a consensus, is that it? Maybe, maybe not. But anyhow, I think that you're supposed to do, do that before, even, that I'm supposed to speak before you make your decision. I think that's the procedure.
They haven't made a decision yet.
Oh, okay. No decision made. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so, so what we have is a similar situation, is that this is an important decision process, not process, but position. And in this case is that the city of Titusville has secretly, I'm going to say, not publicly, secretly, the city of Titusville secretly is not balancing the budget in any way, shape, or form. The city of Titusville has a $65 million unfunded liability. It's announced April the 28th, 2020. Considering what was spoken by, for example, Mrs. Nelson, Dr. Stokel, and Engineer Jordan, it seems that we've got a problem, considering what you, what your actions were taken on April the 28th, 2020, at that meeting in which the auditor said, hey, we got a problem. This also concerns our CRA. Right now is that every man, woman, and child, you divide $65 million divided by the population, every man, woman, and child owes $1,400. Now, this is not, this is, let's say, this has been kept a secret for years, and it's, public needs to know it. I'm letting you know right now. So we need to be truthful and get rid of our City Manager who is hiding this, and I don't, I, I think that we need to, well, just tell the truth. City Hall is not telling the truth on many issues, and this is one, one of the important ones. I told you about, last time, just a minute ago, I told you about the fraud, $70,000 report that doesn't exist, that says that Stan Johnston is a complete jerk as far as being an engineer. I've been an engineer since 1976, registered engineer. So I'm asking you to take into consideration, everything that you do is that tell the people the truth. Right now is we are deficit spending. That's what we're doing. Every money is deficit spending on our budget. So please take this into consideration in what you do in the CRA, because they're spending a lot of money also, and the Council is spending money. I see just, what I do is just absolutely no consideration of the debt that we owe. That was considered also when we did our millage. Nothing was said about it.
Time's up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, unless you're not required to have a, a roll call vote, which you could certainly.
I was going to ask that question.
Because you're required to appoint under our resolution, so the minutes need to reflect your vote.
Okay, what I was going to, since we're voting on or making a consensus of myself and Vice Mayor Nelson, do we vote on this as well?
Yeah, I would vote on this just because, you know, it's required that this council make that, those appointments, and we need the minutes to reflect that if we're audited, so I would have the vote reflect that, yes, sir.
Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sir, could, could we clarify the maker of the, are we requesting a maker of the motion?
I'll move. I think that we were doing consensus, right?
Well, we were.
But we're now going to do.
Mr. Robinson, Member Robinson.
Are we going back to the first one?
No.
This is for, this is for. Chair and Vice Chair of the CRA would need a motion to, because I heard it's.
Run it, run it.
I was going to do that.
Okay.
Can I do it? Okay. I move that we approve Mayor, I'm going to say Walt Johnson, Mayor Diesel, and Vice Mayor Nelson to be the Chair and Vice Chair of the Titusville Community Redevelopment Agency.
And I.
A roll call.
Thank you, sir. Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member, Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
In the last order of business, Mayor and Council, is public comment, as this is a special meeting, comments from the public present must relate directly to the agenda items.
Do I have anybody, public comment?
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue, still a resident here, been since '71. I even was employed by the city of Titusville. I have a retirement from the city. So right now I'm disturbed because this is my hometown, and it's, 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 it's this considerable corruption in our government. Presently, our, our council disagrees with so many employees and departments on this $70,000 report. I've, it appears that the City Council is calling our City Clerks, our Records Manager, Finance Department, Purchasing Department, and so forth like that. They call them liars. So what kind of, what kind of a business is going on here? When you call your employees liars, you're disagreeing with them. And this is, this is not right. And, and like I said before, is that, is that I can get anybody to come and speak to, or address the records clerk, get a request for records and say that the report doesn't exist. So we have a problem there. Fact is, I just wrote, and I'll read it to you. Can we have a little bit of quiet there? I guess not. It says, "It is time to clean house. It's time to clean house, and this is to get rid of the piece of crap, our slick shit Shyster City Manager. Get rid of him without a golden parachute. Get rid of him before he is vested with a pension that drains more than $1 million of benefits from our city that is already in trouble with deficit spending. Please note that the last two City Managers, that is, Harmer and, and Mark Ryan, took off and left city as soon as they were vested in our pension system. Do not, do not make this million-dollar mistake again." Well, not again, but do not make this million-dollar mistake to, to our Shyster City Manager, who's, who has a closed-door policy, won't talk to me, he has a code, code of silence. In other words, my clients, when our clients say, listen, I'd like the City Manager to talk to me and my engineer, there's nothing. Nothing happens. So right now, this closed-door policy is not democratic at all. It's nonsense. And so we need to get rid of our City Manager, get rid of him as soon as possible. He's not worth it. He's just been a liar, dishonest, everything else. So please do that, and remember what's going on in the city. How would you like to work for a place in which the, the upper management is, is saying that everything, that you're lying? What kind of, what kind of business is this? City, the city of Titusville is in big trouble. Let's straighten it out. Let's get rid of our City Manager. We've got a lot of problems. I mean, we won't even tell the people that we're doing deficit spending. The $70,000 report's been gone for 21 months? The same lie?
Time's up, sir.
May I have asked for two minutes?
I see no motion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Another speaker, please.
Let me kind of clear things up a little.
Name and address, please.
Pete Paddock, Titusville, Little Oak Circle, 1237. I'd like to congratulate the new members. I'll start off with Sarah. Sarah, you ran an excellent campaign. I've been watching campaigns for a while, and I'd say you wrote the textbook this time around. I know you won by a large percentage, but the way you ran your campaign, you deserve it. Now we get to the mayor. Well, first, I think this is a good-looking council, you know, best I've seen in a while. All right, now we get to the mayor.
There you go.
Poof, man, it was given to you. You didn't have any competition.
That's a good thing.
Well, you said, you said you wanted some competition.
You should have run.
Well, hey.
Next time.
It's a nasty job. You heard Stan, right?
I know Stan.
Full of crooks and thieves and liars, and y'all got to swim in that water.
Yep.
You know, that's tough. You got to swim with the sharks. And then last, Mr. Robinson, congratulations. I know that you had a tough campaign, and I saw pictures of a pretty guy everywhere running against you. So I know that you had, that anyhow, you had a tough campaign, and you ended up winning by a decent percentage, and congratulations. And I know as a team, this council is going to work good. And once again, thank all of you for your service.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else wish to speak?
And Mayor, before you adjourn, just administratively, we would like to get a picture of each Councilmember between the flags before, we'll have our staff come out there, and then we will Photoshop one together because of the social distancing.
We are magical. Okay, thank you. And just a reminder that there was going to be cake back there and a reception for Mayor Johnson. I will get the people out of the lobby area, and we'll gather for a few minutes. And we will reconvene again tonight at 6:30. And with that, meeting adjourned.